Moment of silence. And?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
If you would remain standing as you are able for a moment of silence. And that concludes our moment of silence. You may be seated.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. The first or the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Colleagues, is there a motion?
I move the school board approved the agenda for today's meeting.
Moved by Ms. Cincella, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Irving. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda has been approved. The next item on the agenda is to go into closed session. Colleagues, is there a motion?
I move that the school board go into closed session for the discussion of matters covered under item A1 of section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia in 1950 as amended pertaining to the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific school board employees.
Moved by Mr. Young, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Atkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We are now in closed session. We will resume an open meeting at the conclusion of closed session.
I move that the school board certified by a recorded vote that the best that to the best of each school board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirement of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Moved by Mr. Irving, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Young. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Closed session has been certified. Dr. Cashwell, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and to our visitors. Good afternoon. Our first presentation provides an update on the results of the year one implementation of Henrico Cares and upcoming plans for the 2526 school year, year two. Dr. Hughes will begin the presentation and introduce our presenters. Dr. Hughes.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Good afternoon, Chair Shay, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. As the board is aware, Henrico Cares officially launched in the 2024-2025 school year. With me this afternoon are three very impressive school and county staff members who have been instrumental in facilitating the implementation of year one. Before I turn it over to Amy and Daniel, I do want to take a moment to publicly introduce Laura Tati. For those of you who don't know, she is the executive director of, and she has a very long and fancy title, she is the executive director of mental health services at the Henrico Area Mental Health and Developmental Services team. So, thank you, Laura, for your support. Together, we have really accomplished a lot together. And at this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Amy Johnson, who is a Henrico County employee. She is our school-based mental health clinical supervisor. And of course, with her is Daniel Rigsby, who is the director of the mental health services at Henrico Mental Health and Developmental Services. So, I will turn it over to them now for a year one update. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hughes. As you know, Henrico Cares is a partnership between Henrico County Government and Henrico County Public Schools to fully implement a comprehensive action plan in phases across five years that works to ensure all students and their families can easily access coordinated, integrated mental health care services at all levels of need across county agencies, schools, and community providers. Foundational to the success of Henrico Cares is the provision for five new school-based mental health positions annually for five years. In year one, the 2425 school year, HCPS leveraged these positions to establish five tiered intervention school counselors, or TISC, each serving two high schools, delivering trauma-informed programming and services that prevent and address youth substance use, violence, and mental health concerns at their roots. As a result of TISC efforts and a partnership with our health and PE teachers, HCPS is able to report that students in grades six through 10 were provided with life skills training and evidence-based curriculum shown to prevent youth substance use, violence, and other health risk behaviors. Students in grades nine through 10 successfully completed the Catch My Breath Youth Vaping Prevention Program. Additionally, students showing signs of early signs of substance misuse receive Teen Intervene, an evidence-based program delivered one-on-one by our TISC that address underlying causes of substance use and guide students through early critical intervention. And in partnership with the Henrico Sheriff's Office, HCPS saw an increase in participation in scheduled hidden-in-plane-site events. These events are interactive events that help parents spot the signs of substance use and start informed conversations with their teens. Another layer of the extensive systems of care made possible through by Henrico Cares in year one was the launch of two services to HCPS students and families, each serving as an additional access point to mental health care services and supports, and both available at no cost regardless of insurance status. The first, CareSalus, is a 24/7 multilingual care coordination service that connects students, families, as well as staff with mental health and substance use treatment providers that fit their needs and preferences, scheduling appointments, and providing follow-up to ensure successful care. We are pleased to report that in its just first year of implementation, over 452 HCPS students, families, and staff utilized CareSalus and have successfully participated in sessions with a new mental health care provider as a result, with an average wait time of approximately two to three weeks. This equates to a 45% rate of appointment into care, which is significantly higher than the national average of 18%. Approximately 40% of those being served identified as children ages three to 11 years, 31% as adolescents, 12 to 17 years, and 29% as adults aged 18 to 67 years. This slide also indicates includes the top five reasons reported for seeking support through CareSalus during year one. The second new service launched in year one was Hazel Health, which offers HCPS high schoolers weekly virtual teletherapy sessions with licensed multilingual therapists, delivered with parent or guardian consent and in the comfort of their own home. As you can see here, the implementation of Hazel Health has also resulted in meaningful gains. At the time of this presentation, 132 students in grades nine through 12 had participated in a total of 536 weekly virtual teletherapy sessions with a licensed mental health provider, with 62 students continuing to access services throughout the summer. This slide also reflects the top five reasons reported for seeking support through Hazel Health throughout this year. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Daniel Rigsby, who will share information about year one through the lens of Henrico Area Mental Health and Developmental Services. And then I'll rejoin Daniel when it be when it's time to begin sharing positive outcomes.
Good afternoon. Further broadening access to mental health care services and supports, Henrico Cares made it possible for HCPS and our agency to co-locate a second mental health team on the campus of Fairfield Middle School in year one. This team includes a licensed mental health provider, case manager, and clinical supervisor. And services provided include group, individual, and/or family therapy, as well as case management and family support. As a result of these efforts, 54 students received outpatient therapy and/or case management services on-site at Fairfield. Eleven students were linked to intensive in-home ABA or crisis support services. Six students received psychiatric services, and three students were linked with the Children's Services Act or the FAP team. Parent-child interaction therapy is a highly effective, evidence-based therapeutic intervention designed to improve the quality of the parent caregiver in the child relationship and addresses behavioral problems in young children between the ages of three and seven. In the last year, the Henrico PCIT program demonstrated success, with 89% of youth participating in the program showing significant improvement in their behavior. Henrico was the first community service board in the region to offer PCIT and is the first community services board in the state to be able to offer PCIT in English, Spanish, and Lebanese Arabic. Over the last year, we focused on expanding our capacity to offer this service, providing training to two additional clinicians. We currently have five fully certified PCIT clinicians and two close to completing their certification process. We are fortunate to have an in-agency trainer, which cuts down on training cost and facilitates easier coordination and scheduling. In addition to expanding capacity, we also saw an increase in demand for this service. We continue working on developing referral pathways to ensure that pediatricians, preschools, and daycares are aware of this service and its potential to set up young children with behavior problems for a successful entry into the school setting. In addition, we work closely with the early learning preschool team to offer training and to ensure a smooth referral process for anyone they are linking to PCIT services. Additionally, under Henrico Cares, a model was developed between Henrico Public Schools and our agency and a local private mental health agency to provide 12 HCPS school counselors and social workers with the clinical supervision required for licensure by the Virginia Board of Health Professions, as both LCSWs and LPCs, Licensed Clinical Social Workers and Licensed Professional Counselors, while continuing to serve in their current roles as school-based mental health providers. To date, participating school counselors have provided 4,533 direct hours of service to HCPS students while receiving more than 343 hours of clinical supervision at no cost to them. Furthermore, this partnership has allowed for the staff the soft opening of a free youth mental health clinic at HCPS's The Oak Avenue Complex, where 10 participating school counselor volunteer while off-contract as residents in counseling. They provide mental health services to youth and their families under the direct supervision of our agency's clinical staff. With all that in mind, we believe that the impact of Henrico Cares speaks for itself. However, we also recognize that it deserves a few slides focusing on outcomes.
In its first year of implementation, Henrico Cares has established a strong foundation contributing to meaningful progress and measurable gains. As you see here, HCPS saw a 5% decrease in incidence of alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use across comprehensive high school settings in year one, which coincides with the increase in direct counseling services provided by our five new TISC at the high school level.
In year one, HCPS also recorded the lowest number of suicide risk screenings completed in over four years, a significant decrease. Similarly, HCPS saw a 10% decrease in the number of threat assessments initiated and completed under the category of danger to others is defined by Virginia's K-12 Threat Assessment Guidance. Our agency also reported a similar trend, seeing 11% fewer youth with high risk of suicide in year one as compared to the previous year. And we reported a 4% reduction in youth seeking our same-day access services, which may reflect the increased availability of mental health supports and services within the school settings.
And this slide highlights the decreases recorded in incidents categorized as behaviors that endanger others, behaviors of a safety concern, and persistently dangerous behaviors from the 2223 school year to the 2425 school year. Here, you can also see a significant decline in defiance to staff questions and requests, verbal confrontations, and posting, distributing, displaying, or sharing inappropriate media or literature from the 2324 school year to the 2425 school year, as well as decreases in recorded incidents of behaviors that impede academic progress, specifically by interfering with the learning both in and out of class. This, along with all of the information shared with you today, marks a significant milestone in transforming the youth mental health and wellness landscape of Henrico and reflects a powerful momentum behind Henrico Cares as it heads into its second year of implementation. It is our hope that this work is really making a difference, having strong partnerships with other departments and positive factors. As we move forward into this year, we carry with us the lessons learned and the momentum gained as we continue to strengthen our comprehensive school mental health systems, deepen our collaborations, and expand access to these vital services we just shared. This year, our provision of five school-based mental health positions were divided between two additional school counseling positions, one at the preschool level and one at the high school level, and three licensed mental health providers, or professionals, which we refer to as LMHPs. These licensed mental health professional roles are new to the district and represent a significant step forward in expanding our capacity to provide intensive mental health supports for students and families within the school settings. All LMHPs are fully licensed clinicians, so either licensed clinical social workers or licensed professional counselors through the Virginia Board of Health Professions, and they deliver a full continuum of services, including individual, group, and family therapy, crisis intervention, and coordination of care with community providers. By embedding these licensed mental health professionals directly into our elementary schools, we are able to offer timely, direct access for students experiencing moderate to severe mental health challenges that affect daily functioning and academic success. LMHPs serve as an integral extension of each school's mental health team to collaborate and collaborate closely with our counselors, our social workers, and psychologists to ensure coordinated, student-centered care within our multi-tiered systems of support. This investment not only addresses urgent student needs but also builds long-term capacity to promote wellness and resilience across our school communities. As we look ahead, we will be advancing several key initiatives in school year 2627. Building on the success of our high school implementation, Hazel Health Hazel Health teletherapy services will be expanded to our middle schools so that our middle school students will be able to access therapy sessions from the comfort of their home at no cost to them. To better identify students, our students' mental health needs, we will research and evaluate a universal screening tool that will allow us to respond to student needs quickly. We will continue to strengthen the knowledge and skills of students, staff, parents, and caregivers by continuing to deliver evidence-based programming and curriculum, such as our Youth Mental Health First Aid Course, which is a nationally recognized curriculum designed to teach caring adults how to help a young person who's experiencing a mental health or substance use challenge or showing signs of a crisis. And then finally, we will continue to evaluate student mental health data and emerging trends to strategically determine how to leverage our next five school-based mental health positions. This approach will ensure that placements are responsive to student needs, aligned with district priorities, and maximize impact across our division.
As a reminder, Henrico Mental Health in coordination with Henrico Schools placed three staff, each at Virginia Randolph and Fairfield Middle School. As we move forward to plan for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, our agency will again partner with Henrico Schools to determine expansion and placement of another school-based team. Difficulty accessing services due to work hours, transportation, or stigma continue to be barriers to many families seeking behavioral health services for their children. Henrico Cares helps overcome these barriers by placing our employees within the school setting. These services were initially funded through our grant, though Henrico Cares has facilitated expansion of this program. Last year, we added staff at Fairfield Middle School, and we'll be adding additional elementary schools this school year. In the last school year, we we served just under a hundred students receiving services through these school-based staff. One school counseling staff at one of the schools mentioned to us, "I am so thankful for the support we received from you all this year. I saw a huge difference with the students they worked with by the end of the school year. Their presence was very instrumental with the students' growth." We're grateful for the opportunity to provide the school board with update on year one of Henrico Cares' implementation and for the board's ongoing commitment to prioritizing and supporting the mental health and wellness of Henrico's youth and families. We're happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Thank you so much for your presentation and really your time and dedication to this this topic and the rollout of cares. It's really been tremendous. I'll start with you, Ms. Consella.
Yes, I've heard what Mrs. Shea, what Chair Shea just said, really, it's you you can't deny mental health needs. Not only whether you're a student or an employee, you just can't deny it, nor can you deny how difficult it was until these programs to actually get in to get care if you were struggling. I mean, it was months, and I heard you say, what, it used to be, I don't know, three to four months, maybe? If at all, and now you said, what, two to three weeks?
Yes.
I mean, that's that's tremendous. So thank you all for your work on this. I'm looking forward to, you know, the next years and how we're going to expand it. What are we doing in our schools to reduce the stigma? I know you you mentioned stigma as a barrier that we're still trying to overcome.
So the life skills, the Botvin Life Skills Lessons, those are curriculum designed to help reduce stigma, as well as our Youth Mental Health First Aid Courses. And our Youth Mental Health First Aid Courses are geared towards our adults so that they can respond and support our youth. We also have teen mental health first aid that is bring we bring it down to our high school students, and so this helps peers then recognize signs and symptoms and support other peers by connecting them to a trusted adult. So really bringing this prevention programming into our schools helps reduce that stigma.
What has been the most successful way we've communicated with families? Trying to get the word out, families or students, like, how are they coming to you, or how are they coming to get services? What did they say? Because normally, in an endeavor like this, you would track how you're getting referrals. So what what has been the most successful avenue of communication?
So I would say we've had a multi-pronged approach to communication, so, and I don't want to speak for you. So I would say there's different avenues. We've had paired up with our communication team. I don't know if they want to speak, but we had a mental health awareness month for May, where each week we kind of advertise these different services, also utilizing our students, our active minds, student-led mental health clubs. They've been great kind of advertising to peers. There's been lunch sessions that they've offered, as well as advertising and speaking kind of peer-to-peer of their experience with accessing Hazel Health teletherapy.
Fantastic. I mean, the the outcomes can't be denied, right? That I appreciate you sharing that. And then I guess I would just ask about, why did students stop over the summer? About half of the students, were they in a good spot and were released from whatever kind of counseling, or what was the decreased about half?
I could check in with our partners at Hazel to get more information on that. I'd be glad to send you a follow-up.
Okay. And then lastly, what type of screener? And and for who is the screener going to be done? Because there's been a lot of talk on that on the news, whether it was age-appropriate, not age-appropriate, whether you're leading or suggesting.
Right. At this point, at this point, no, a screener has not been identified. That is the work that this year will take place, is that we will make sure that a multidisciplinary team is pulled together to evaluate what screeners would be an option.
Do we anticipate an opt-in or an opt-out? Or we don't know yet because the work is not yet done, right?
Not sure yet, yes.
Okay, fantastic. I can't wait to hear more in your future presentations. Chair Shea.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. Mr. Irving?
Do we know why that is? Sorry if you didn't hear anything.
That ages three to eleven?
Yes.
And again, that with some of that information is protected from us to why they're accessing services, so I wouldn't be able to tell exactly for what reason. The top five kind of concerned seeking, so, but I could definitely check with our partners at CareSalus.
Okay.
I can tell you just from our perspective, just practically for a parent, it's often easier to get somebody between three to eleven to go to therapy than it is once they hit top.
That makes sense, yeah, especially if if the top cause is disruptiveness, ADHD, eating disorders at a young age. Yeah, that makes sense. The placement rate and timing is obviously phenomenal. Mrs. Consella spoke to that about how quickly we can get people in into actually seeking care. So that's that's wonderful. I wanted to turn to some of the the data that was provided and the positive outcomes. Do we know why there was decline in drug use incidences by quarter over the last school year? Do we know what drove that? Because that's a pretty linear downward trend.
So again, we believe much of that was contributed to the to our TISC, being there onsite at our high schools to be able to deliver services. So it's not only it's prevention services as well as supportive services. So we feel that that's definitely been a factor.
Okay. And then obviously, the the threat assessment reduction is outstanding. I mean, that's almost to right during what it was during COVID. Do we have data going back further than twenty-one, twenty-two on the suicide risk screenings?
We do have data, and I I'm happy to look into that.
Yeah, I would I would love to see that because I want to see, it's great progress, but I want to see in perspective of past trends as well. And can we also provide some perspective on the percent declines? Because I, for me, it's like ten percent, but I don't know what is considered good or what is considered just a normal reduction year over year. So I I guess perspective on what the what the percentage changes mean in terms of like scope, yeah?
Yes, happy to follow up and provide all of these details.
Okay, okay, wonderful. And then the the last one was all of the changes in behaviors in schools. Was this just to provide us with info of what's happening in the schools in terms of? So we weren't we weren't taking credit for all of it. We were just showing us the the reductions that are happening over time.
Correct.
Okay. And then, you know, obviously, if there's barriers that continue to be prevalent, please let us know what we can do to be of assistance with that. Because I I think it's it's a resource that I want everybody who needs to be able to use it to be able to use it. So it's super important work, and thank you all.
Yeah, thank you for your support. Thank you so much, Mr. Irving. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson and Mr. Rigsby for the presentation. Piggybacking off of Madison's comment about suicide, when we identify kids as high-risk, how do we track their progress?
So when we identify them, so what we complete in the schools is a suicide screener, and so that will just determine a level of risk as far as what our next steps should be. So we're not completing an assessment. So if it's high-risk, that we're then referring them to our partners at Henrico Mental Health or other agencies, other crisis agencies, where then follow-up care is then determined from there. So it's really determining our next steps and supporting the student.
And what if a parent identifies a child as potentially being suicidal? Is it same approach taken?
Correct, yes, we would complete, we, each of our school-based mental health team members are trained to provide a suicide screener, and then there are action steps that we would take depending on the results of the screener to get that family connected to care. If it's a critical for a high risk, we have a partnership with Crest. We have our partnership with Henrico Mental Health so that we can act, get them access to services immediately.
Okay, and that would be crooked in the two- to three-week timeframe that we normally see, right?
No, so when it's crisis-related, we can get them connected same day.
Same day, perfect. Thank you for that. And speaking of two- to three-week timeframe, Hazel, I'm sorry, CareSalus is two to three weeks. What about the Hazel Health? Is that also two to three?
I can double-check what our rate was with Hazel Health.
Okay, perfect. And at Fairfield Middle School, is that considered wraparound services at this point? Are they onsite, only servicing the kids at Fairfield Middle School?
Exactly, yes. So they're solely dedicated to that school.
Okay, now are we planning to maybe contract other companies to help out at other schools? Or is this just going to be an expansion into going into maybe elementary schools or more middle schools?
So through Cares, there will be an expansion into additional schools with this particular model. But what you may be thinking of is some of our other partnerships where we bring folks onsite, and we can provide some more details. That that's an ongoing effort as well, sort of alongside Cares, but not part of this particular package and funding.
Okay, thank you, because I do get that question often about outside organizations wanting to come in and provide services. Another question that I have, do we do we know who's receiving services? And I ask that because I like to understand whether there has been any correlation with improved academic achievement after receiving services.
So two parts answer to that question. One is that one of the pieces we do is track all of the demographic data on all of the youth that we serve. Because one of the things we want to make sure is that we're serving a cross-representational group of people within the school setting. And then in terms of outcomes, you know, two agencies, it's always a little difficulty. We have our own tracking mechanism for youth that we serve, but we're also talking about strategies that we can really track the academic progress of those children over time to see the impact of having the school-based counseling, what that does for them over the course of their their academic career.
Okay, awesome. If a, I know that sometimes academics sort of lead to us realizing kids may have mental health issues, and I see it a lot with straight A students I nail, maybe CDF grades are trending the other way. Are teachers trained to recognize these things and maybe talk to a parent or talk to someone on site to see if this child needs mental health services?
So each of our teachers are trained annually on suicide prevention awareness, so our school-based mental health team members provide that annual training, as well as we do in eighth and tenth grade, we do signs of suicide lessons. So those are with the students, but there is a staff training beforehand to make sure that they have that information. And then again, our youth mental health first aid trainings, we have that offered on our career ladder as a micro-credential, as well as just a separate course, so that, again, another way for staff to be trained to recognize challenges in our youth.
Perfect. I still think that this will be Henrico County, as well as this board's greatest thing that we've done is invest in mental health. So thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all the work that you all do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. Atkins?
Thank you for the presentation as well. It's encouraging to see the positive outcomes and as well as seeing where we're headed. Regarding the teletherapy, does that happen within the school as well?
Not at this point.
Okay. One thought I had is the opportunity to allow that to happen within schools.
That is something that's projected in the future. However, we want to build infrastructure around how that happens so that we can ensure safety, confidentiality, and privacy for the student while also monitoring them and also not disrupting academic time.
Agreed, and I'm glad that's being explored because there are situations where that type of resource would be unhealthy at home. So if you have, I'll give an example of a high school student that wanted to use the resources at home, but much prefer to do it at school, whether it's with their counseling or their coach, because it's a potentially safer environment. So I'm glad that that we are exploring that. The other question that I had is around the session patterns. I don't know if this is being tracked, but with the teletherapy, do we know how many sessions per week per individual utilizing the resource?
Yes, that information can be obtained from Hazel Health.
I would be curious as to what that looks like and what trends do we see? For example, if one individual using the resources, using ten sessions versus another individual using one session, and what does that look like from a resource perspective? Thank you. Also, I wanted to better understand how we market the free mental health services at The Oak.
As of right now, we have been actually working with our partners at FACE to utilize the students or access the students that are there in the Connect program. So again, reducing access and barriers, looking at transportation. So we've been there providing services directly to the Project Connect students, and I'd like Daniel to speak more.
Yeah, Connect is a after-school program that we operate in different sites throughout the county, their most recent one being opening at The Oak, that uses a number of evidence-based curricula to help support young people's healthy development, school preparedness, life skills, the the full gamut. The other thing that we did specifically at The Oak is we did sort of an analysis of all of our current clientele to identify people who lived in a proximity to that area and offered them the opportunity to come there if that was more convenient for them than coming to our center on Non-Mount Road.
Thank you for sharing that. My wheels are spinning. I wonder if we have service-oriented clubs or students in service-oriented clubs that could assist with the awareness. So where, you know, maybe it's the first responders club who is all about services and care, or ROTC as well, all about services and care. So those are just two at top of mind, but I wonder if we use peer-to-peer awareness for topics such as this and using those particular clubs. Well, really, they'll be getting community support hours as well as being a wonderful influence to their peers. So something just to think about, and I'll continue to to think through that as well. And then I had a question about the expansion around the teletherapy to middle schools. How are we going to do that implementation? I'm sure we're not going to expand it all at once. What is the process in which we're using to select the middle schools that are next?
The plan is for next year that it will be expanded to all of our middle schools.
All of them starting next year?
Yes.
Wow, okay. That's triggered another question. So we know, let me back up. Are we on track for full funding for the five? And by the end of year five, this would be completely paid for? Are we on track for that?
Yes.
It's about eighteen million dollars, something like that. So when you said said all five in one year, it triggered the funding thought for me. So in doing that with resources and everything, we will still be on track, correct?
We planned for the rollout to secondary to include all middle schoolers at this stage, and we are on track to achieve that.
Outstanding. All right, thank you. And then just some feedback from grandparents. Is there a way we can do a targeted communication for grandparents? There's plenty. I've seen marketing on social media. I've seen the digital components. But the feedback that I get from grandparents is, can we get paper? And I am environmentally conscious, but I do agree for our grandparents, how can we get paper to them? I know if you give it to students, it may not still get to them. So it is something to think about, but from the feedback that I've received from grandparents is how can we receive this information that we understand it in a way that we can really get the help for our grandkids?
Thank you, yes.
So just something else to think about. And I had one last thought around the literacy components. I want to know, as we think about those literacy tools on this particular topic, have we thought about looking at some of the have we thought about looking at some of the behavior-tracking apps? I think one of them is bearable. Not saying we need to use it, you got to do your research. But just whether it's a digital template or an app that individual students can be independent and have ownership of their emotions and track their emotions over a period of time. Have we looked into that?
Not at this point, but this would be something that we could partner with our internal alternative, alternative education and engagement team to make sure that that's something that maybe we can look at together.
It may be a powerful way as you are trying to empower our students to be independent, how to recognize their emotions. And when they recognize those emotions, how often are they having them? So a digital tool may be a great way of ownership for that. And that concludes all my thoughts. And I'll continue thinking on some of the other things that you've shared as well. Wonderful work. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. This is tremendous work. I recall coming out of the pandemic, Dr. Cashwell had a really, along with the, the general government, a really laser-focused on youth crime and violence as well as youth mental health. But this, you know, kind of stemmed out of some of that work as well. I know when it was first talked about, there were a lot, there was a lot of red tape between HIPAA and FERPA and, you know, all of these pieces on how do we protect student confidentiality and privacy while having the collaboration necessary to make sure students aren't falling through the gaps with all of our different agencies. And so I know at the front end, that was a lot of work to untangle that. But, but you took the time to do it and you took time to do it well so that we can have all of these fruits. And I think often, you know, those pieces, a lot less glamorous, a lot less sexy, right? Then, then a lot of this. But that was really intentional work that took significant time in order to be able to roll this out. And so I want, I want to say, you know, thank you for figuring out those pieces. I think a lot of this work around mental health is, it's easy to say, well, this is too big. I don't know how to change it all, so we'll just push it off. And Henrico hasn't done that, right? Henrico has said, we might not be able to influence all the pieces or change all the determining factors. But we can change some, right? And so you have dug in headfirst. And, and that is what's moving the needle and that is making change. Not saying, oh, well, it's so big, we can't do it all, but saying, well, we can do something. And we're seeing the fruits of that. Like Mr. Irving said, that 40% of the three to 11-year-olds really jumped out at me. I appreciate the context. I didn't, even as a parent who has a child who accesses mental health, it, it, it for some reason didn't click that it's easier to get a, a younger child to go. So that's helpful context. But I, but I also am in some ways encouraged by that number because, as well as the PCIT therapy that from an earlier age, equipping our students with the skills they need as they navigate middle school and high school and adolescence and all of the things that the, earlier and more often that we can equip our students with skills to navigate mental health, the better. And so while it was a bit jarring to see that number, in some ways, it's also encouraging that we're getting it earlier and more often to students who might need it. When I see, so I'm really excited about the free mental health supports at The Oak for the community. As we look at expanding our school community, our community school hubs, so at Virginia Randolph and Quiacuson, do we look at possibly being able to offer those at our other hubs as well as we expand?
Those would definitely need to be future conversations with our partner Henrico Mental Health as well as our FACE team.
Excellent. Well, I'll put a plug in that the queue is on the bus line to help with transportation. But I think we're all very excited about that and looking forward to access in all of our districts. You know, as we know that that's a significant need. So thank you for that. When we see the relationship behaviors decrease of incidence of, one of them, it says posting, distributing, displaying of material decreased 34%. Would that be things like social media?
Correct.
I think that is really excellent because, right, social media exists outside of our school building, both physically and, you know, kind of in, in the cloud space, if you will. But we know it has such a significant impact on what happens in our school building in terms of behavior, safety, academics. And so the fact that this work is able to have a positive, such, such a significant 34%, such a significant impact on, again, something that is nebulous and hard and we can't control all the pieces of, but we can do something, right? And I think that's the theme that has continued to resonate with me through this is we can't address all the pieces, but we can do something and, and we are. So again, tremendous, I appreciate that. And then, yeah, and as a, as someone who was a high school student who needed to have access to mental health supports, and I think about how different things were 25, 30 years ago and where we are now. This is a profound impact. Like Mr. Young said, this will be this board's legacy of increasing conversations around mental health and access to mental health. And it's moving the needle for an entire generation. So thank you for your dedicated work to this. This is important work. This is work, again, not to be a broken record, that we can't do all the pieces of, but we're doing our something and that is so powerful. So thank you for your work. And I, I look forward to in five years to see how much this has blossomed, how much this has grown, how much it has positively impacted our students, our families and our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Colleagues, anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
All right. Again, kudos to the team leading this work. And I think it's one of many examples of the power of collaboration with our general government partners and really the power of making a difference when we come together to solve a complex issue. So thank you for the update. The next update is on our major capital projects. You do not have to drive far in Henrico County to see shovels and bulldozers and all kinds of things happening across the school system related to capital projects. So thought it would be a good time as we kick off the new school year for Susan Moore, Director of Facilities, to provide an overview of what's happening on the capital projects front. Susan?
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the School Board, Superintendent Cashwell. Today, we will be providing an update on these major capital projects that are taking place across our school division. Before we take a look at these projects, we will quickly review how facilities and HCPS capital projects fit within the structure of the HCPS strategic plan. Our school spaces fall within the strategic focus area of learning environment with the goal of all students and staff having safe, welcoming and innovative spaces to learn and work in. Today, we're going to take a look at the, reviewing our major capital projects from the completion of the 2016 bond referendum, from capital, general capital project planning, as well as from our projects of the 2022 bond referendum. Jacob L. Adams Elementary School was the last of the HCPS projects of the 2016 bond referendum. This school was built in 1966 and has approximately 63,000 square feet. It was slated for a comprehensive renovation, but you will see on the screen a small addition to the building entry and a new orientation for all of our visitors to that school. This did allow the school to reorient the main office towards the main parking area. Adams' capacity remains unchanged with approximately 500 students. The construction will continue through this school year and next summer with completion in the fall of 2026. Our next project is the campus of Virginia Randolph, which was a combination of a rebuild, renovation and addition. You get it all at AVR. The ACE building was renovated along with an 11,000-square-foot addition. The old campus-style buildings, eight of them built in 1958 and 60, have been torn down and a new 82,000-square-foot building was constructed. And finally, the historic Building B, as we refer to it, is under renovation. The ACE and the new building were open for use this past school year. And the renovation of Building B, which will house the early intervention program, ACE culinary and AVR supports, will be complete by the end of this calendar year. The legacy of Virginia Randolph will be interwoven throughout the existing and new construction of the campus. We're pleased to host a hard hat tour of the buildings next week on September 4th with the official ribbon cutting happening in January of 2026. Sorry, I'm not turning my pages quickly enough. This list on, on this slide provides an overview of the project status for the active projects included in the 2022 bond referendum. We will review each one of these projects in the following slides. The original campus-style Jake Jackson Davis Elementary School was built in 1962 and '77 with approximately 53,000 square feet. The rebuilt Davis Elementary School will be a two-story structure with approximately 94,000 square feet. And the student capacity will increase from approximately 500 students to 750. This project has a very significant amount of site work, which is predominantly done. Building footings and wall construction are underway. The new construction is slated to be completed in the fall of 2026 with building demolition and remaining site work completed after that. The original campus-style Longin Elementary School was built in '61 and '77 with approximately 55,000 square feet. The rebuilt Longin Elementary School will also be a two-story structure with approximately 94,000 square feet. These two schools will be sister schools as far as having the same prototype. This project's site work is just about done, along with building footings and steel framing, as you can see in the photograph. Wall construction continues. Like Davis, the new construction is slated to be completed in the fall of '26 with building demolition and remaining site work completed after that. The Living Building Project is a new construction project which will support the Center for Environmental Studies and Sustainability at Verona High School. This building will have four classrooms, a common area and extensive outdoor space where the SIS students can utilize experiential learning. These outdoor spaces will also support other HCPS students in outdoor learning and experiences. The building will be approximately 15,000 square feet in size and will be constructed in accordance with the Living Building Challenge requirements. Once certified, it will be the first K-12 public school building in the world. Design is being completed along with material selections that will comply with the Living Building Challenge. Site work and construction will begin this fall with completion slated for the fall of 2026. A groundbreaking event will be held later in September. The original Quiacuson Middle School was built in 1969 with approximately 162,000 square feet. The rebuilt Quiacuson Middle School will be a three-story structure with approximately 179,000 square feet. The student capacity will be approximately 1,350 students. The rebuilt school will also house one of the middle school centers for innovation as well as a family and community engagement hub. The building has been designed as in currently in the bidding process with bids due on September 4th. Construction should start in late fall with an anticipated opening in the fall of 2027. And again, the existing school demolition and site work will be completed after the opening of the new school. Our final slide covers the three upcoming projects in the next group of the 2022 bond referendum planning. Charles M. Johnson Elementary School, which was built in 1958 and '97, will be a renovation project. This school was partially renovated in 2011 with the administration building, cafeteria and gym not being a part of that scope. This renovation will address these buildings extensively as well as revisiting the previous buildings with HVAC replacements, bathroom upgrades, lighting enhancements and painting. As you saw in the recent schematic presentation, a small addition at the office is planned to better orient visitors to the school. Bidding for this project is anticipated in the late fall of this year with potential project completion in the fall of 2027. The new Fairfield Area Elementary School will be a new school for HCPS located in the River Mill community on a 23-acre parcel. The new school is anticipated to be similar to the programming of the Davis and Longin rebuild projects with approximately 90,000 square feet and a capacity of 700 to 800 students. A request for proposals is currently in process for the selection of a qualified design team. This school is slated to open in the fall of 2029. Highland Springs Elementary School is a rebuild project of the existing one-story masonry school building. The existing building was built in 1966 and encompasses approximately 67,000 square feet and has a student capacity of approximately 650 students. HCPS will receive design funding in fiscal year '26, '27 in order to prepare for the construction funding, which will become available in fiscal year '27, '28. The rebuilt school is anticipated to be similar, again, to the programming of our Davis and Longin rebuild projects. This concludes our update and we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. There are so many exciting things happening in Henrico. And I know actually, this is only, these are the major capital projects. There are a lot of, I won't say minor, but projects that didn't make the major list that are also going on improvements around the county. And it's, it's a major investment for all of us and for our constituents. And it's exciting to see this progress and the, the fruits of the bond process from a few years ago. So thank you. We're all excited about the new bond projects and the opportunities they bring for our students. Again, we want to thank the Henrico community for their overwhelming support of the bond a few years ago. The board has previously shared our commitment to ensuring that we are prudently planning for responsible use of current and future building capacity and regularly monitoring enrollment to consider any boundary adjustments that may need to be made to best serve students and responsibly use space. We're committed to thoughtful and responsibly thinking about how we plan for growth. This means tracking availability and our space availability in our schools, keeping a close eye on development and enrollment and considering adjustments when needed to best serve students, staff and families. Last spring, this board committed to do just that. Take a comprehensive look at bond projects, capacity and feeder patterns this fall. To that end, the board is requesting staff to prepare potential boundary and/or programmatic adjustment options for best utilizing new capacity available at Longin, Jackson Davis and Quiacuson bond projects, addressing current capacity concerns. And with any suggested adjustments, the board asks that the consideration be given for cohesive feeder patterns. Colleagues, board members, what specific goals do you have in your district that you would like considered? Ms. Atkins, I'll start with you.
So looking ahead, we have some exciting major projects and opportunities on the horizon. We have Adams Elementary School and the Living Building Project expected to be completed in the fall of 2026. We have several things expected to be completed in the fall of 2026, which is wonderful. We're also preparing for the rebuild of Highland Springs Elementary School with design starting in '26, '27. And that, all of that is going to further strengthen our commitment to excellence in education. But I also, at the same time, want to make sure for Verona, Sandston and Highland Springs, we also have new development and proposed development that shapes our community as well. And that is a, a part of my thought process and looking at that as well. So whether we have a proposed data center under consideration near Baker, we have an approved rezoning case and that's about 99 new homes near Old Williamsburg Road. And that will potentially affect Seven Pines, El Coho and Verona. And that is manageable. That will yield. Elko and Verona. And that is manageable. That will yield potentially a low number of students. In addition, there are proposals for development off Creighton Road. We have new single-family and townhomes. Those are going to be proposed near North Washington Street, some near North Airport Drive, and those could impact Highland Springs High School. And right now, Highland Springs is operating somewhere between 90 and 100% capacity. And so with the exciting capital projects we have, along with making sure we're taking a deeper look at potential development, the immediate goal would be to provide capacity relief for Highland Springs High School. And also while we're doing that, I think there's an opportunity to look at transportation efficiencies as well as neighborhood cohesion. So colleagues, by addressing capacity at Highland Springs High School and these major capital projects, along with the developments that I've mentioned, we have a really good opportunity to build schools that not only educate with excellence, but the potential to do some other things as well, particularly for the Verona District around what I mentioned, which was neighborhood cohesion. So that is at top of mind immediate goal. Thank you, Chair Shay.
Thank you, Verona. How about in the Fairfield District?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excited about the new schools coming on board. We have not had a chance to cut a ribbon on one yet. So I am excited about everything that's going on. But I've remained consistent with Henrico High School currently being at 65% capacity. It's the lowest in the county, and I see it as an opportunity, not a challenge. It means that the school already has room for growth. And as new developments come online and as we consider shifting boundaries, Henrico is positioned to welcome more students and strengthen its community. So my first ask for Dr. Cashwell and your team is to closely look at boundaries in the, in the east end of Henrico, the east of Henrico High School, to help alleviate capacity at our high school and in that area where development continues to grow. Second, I would like to also ask you to evaluate the rest of boundaries for Henrico High School to help address the capacity issues we are seeing at several of our high schools across the county. And finally, for any proposal that impacts the Fairfield District, I ask that we carefully consider what every child has, ensuring that students are not losing, but only maintaining or gaining. That means looking at resources, staffing and program complements so that every shift is done thoughtfully and equitably. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Irving, how about the Three Chap District?
Sure. I'm loving the, that the Jackson Davis expansion is going to be happening in the fall of '26. That's going to be fantastic and super exciting. And since Chair Shay has already mentioned them, I will not. But I, as I said back in the spring, I made clear that reducing capacity at Tucker High School, which has been over 100% for a year or so now and will continue to be in the future, is my top priority. As such, I'd like to see options for capacity reduction by way of programming, if possible, and boundary adjustments, if necessary. I also want to reiterate that I view moving students as a last option. If we're able to achieve capacity relief without moving zone students, then that would be the ideal. If not, then and only then should we consider moving students. I would also like to remind everyone of the boundary adjustment policy that was passed in the spring. I feel it's important to highlight that the policy sets the stage for more frequent, yet targeted boundary adjustments, should they be necessary, with the focus on looking at the trends each fall and then having conversations informed by data as necessary. Saying that, I feel that any moves that may be required should focus solely on building capacity, either too many students or too few students, and not other considerations that would be much more difficult to predict the long-term impacts of.
Thank you, Mr. Irving. Ms. Cancela, how about the Brooklyn District?
Yes. Well, the Brooklyn District is very excited about our capital project report in all of the districts that in Henrico schools, especially right now with the rebuild of Longan in the Brooklyn District and the upcoming renovation at Johnson Elementary School. But to the current topic, as my colleagues and constituents know, I always support the board's annual review of current and projected enrollment, capacity, existing and new, specialty centers and other programming in our schools, class sizes, the expected impact of known residential development and transportation challenges. At this time, I would like to request from Dr. Cashwell that the board receive an updated timeline and the expected impact of our current CTE expansion, which includes the second floor of ACE Hermitage and of course, Virginia Randolph capacity, right, that's opening by year end. In addition, potential capacity relief options for Tucker High School, including the feasibility of reversing a pocket boundary adjustment that was made in 2017 that sent students from Hungry Creek Middle School and Glen Allen High School to Holman Middle School and Tucker High School. I would also like to know all known feeder pattern inconsistencies, zone versus programmatic and center enrollment across our schools. And the Brooklyn District constituents have a particular interest in learning more about Moody Middle School and the programming and zone enrollment there. Chair Shay?
Thank you, Ms. Cancela. For the Tukahoe District, I would like to see capacity relief for Freeman High School, which has been over capacity for most of the last decade. Additionally, as we look at opening the new Kwakasun to examine the fractured feeder patterns through that school as it feeds from seven elementary schools and into three high schools. My district has shared that community continuity and balance in matriculation patterns, both for any Freeman adjustments and for Kwakasun, is a leading concern. A reminder that under the Code of Virginia, the school board has the responsibility to establish attendance zones for new schools and adjust any school boundaries. School consolidation, new school attendance zones and boundary adjustments may not be changed without the board's approval. In accordance with Henrico County Public Schools policy, the board may continue, may consider factors including, but not limited to, projected enrollments, school capacities, transportation logistics, school construction plans, operating efficiencies, instructional effectiveness and program placement. And finally, per our Henrico policy, the public shall have opportunities to review and comment on proposed changes before the school board votes on them. Dr. Cashwell, we would like to see public comment opportunities this fall across all parts of the division, both in-person, community meetings and online opportunities for sharing feedback with the board. We ask that any proposed adjustments be made through the lens of prospective developments and the rest of the projects from the 2022 bond, including a brand-new Fairfield Elementary School, which will open around 2028, as well as a newly-built Highland Springs Elementary School opening around 2030. However, we feel that it's premature to dig into any specific maps for projects two to three years from completion. Residents in those areas can expect potential boundary adjustments for those projects and those discussions to be about a year before each of their openings, as we excitedly prepare for those projects to be completed as well. Yes.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair Shay and members of the board. Certainly, staff and I have heard your feed, feedback, first, your enthusiasm about the major capital projects and some of the minor projects, which you alluded to, the ACE expansion, so much we didn't touch on in this capital project update. But all of those things certainly do impact opportunities to have new capacity, new programming for students and certainly represent an opportunity to think about how we can best utilize that space and specifically address the individual concerns each member has expressed in their district related to particular residential areas and school boundaries. So again, staff hear those requests and we will begin to work on putting together responses to that for our next meeting and certainly would follow up individually with board members to make sure that we're understanding the goals you articulated here and driving towards a product that we can bring to you at our next meeting for further discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. And I appreciate you providing clarity that the, you think the team can have some options brought to us at the next meeting. So the public can expect some updates on that and kind of some more specificity as to what some of these solutions may be.
Yeah. I mean, we've certainly heard your requests here and we'll take a stab at meeting the goals you put out, but would want to bring you those first options for board discussion at the meeting and then, you know, look for next steps past that. And certainly, we can also, in addition to some of the scenarios we bring forward to address the specifics you've brought up here, we can also roll out a potential community input timeline, what that would look like once the board would determine which scenarios they, they wanted considered and if we've met the mark on meeting the requests you had for us today.
Great. So we'll look forward to next meeting, some potential solutions, what public input structures and venues that will be, what the timeline will be on that and kind of the timeline of the whole, of the whole process. So more information to come at the next meeting. Just to be clear, no decisions to be made at the next meeting at all, but this will be an ongoing project for us, at least this fall. So thank you. Colleagues, anything else? All right. Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Colleagues, do you have any unfinished business for us? The next item on the agenda is new business. Any new business at this time? All right. Well, that concludes our agenda, other than the announcement of the next meeting, which is here at 6:30 this evening. So we look forward to seeing you then. This meeting is adjourned.